Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council Meeting, Library Board, Housing Authority Board, Community Services District, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. And this is our regular meeting, Thursday, November 20th, 2014, and it is now one o'clock. So, welcome, everyone. I think we'll start out with our flag salute, and Charlie Townsend is going to be leading that.
Thank you. Would you like to put your hand over your heart? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And now we'll have our city clerk, Cindy, take role when she has a second. I know she's busy down there already. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Wild.
Here.
And Mayor Smutrich. Here. And just as a note to let you all know, our system of voting is a little bit not behaving well, so we're going to be taking all of our votes verbally, so we don't have to be pushing any buttons today. Okay. First of all, we'll start with our presentations, and this is something that is going to be done by David Bryant. But I see David is not here as yet. Oh, there he is.
He's not at all.
I'm not used to seeing you sit down there. All right. Well, as David comes up to the front area, and he's going to be introducing all the members of our Cultural Commission, and he will say a few words about each of them, or let them speak on their own. But just to let people know, the Cultural Commission was formed in Rancho Mirage several years ago. Their mission is to support the development and prospering of the cultural environment of the city by enhancing access to cultural amenities for all residents in the Coachella Valley. The Commission has already scheduled five events in 2014 and 15, and their first one is this Sunday, November 23rd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the library. It's called "An Afternoon of Chamber Music," and it will be performed by the San Bernardino Symphony Chamber Orchestra. The second event will be, and if you have a chance, and you can put it on your calendar, that would be great, otherwise we'll be sending you some notices about it, so you won't have to worry about missing anything. The second event is going to be Wednesday, February 18th, at the library, and it will be called "Give Them Hell, Harry." It's a one-man performance of "Harry Truman" by Justin Blake, director of the California Desert Regional Theater. The third performance will be Saturday, March 7th, 2015, leaving from the library. This is going to be a very special event that we've never had before, and this was David's idea, because he is a photographer buff, a photography buff.
We'll see how it works.
Okay. And it's going to be a tour of the Salt and Sea Teaching with Master Photographer, Bill Brewer. Should be a wonderful event. The fourth event is going to be Wednesday, April 1st, 2015, at the library, and it is a play called "Play Ball," a nine-act or nine-inning appreciation of baseball, with Bill Marx, Scott Kiner, Frank Farino, who happens to be in our audience today, and many others. And then finally, Saturday, April 18th, we have an event that will be held for the second year, because it was so successful last year, and it will be an expanded version of the Rancho Mirage Artists' Home and Studio Tour. We'll have more artists, more studios, and more art, and just keep in mind that all of these events are being held free of charge. If you want further information, please go on our website, and if you have problems with that, don't hesitate to call Rancho Mirage City Hall at 760-324-4511. Thanks so much, and here is David.
Thank you, Mayor Smutrich, members of the council. I'd like to introduce this year's 2014-15 members of the city's Cultural Commission. Could you all come up, please? What a great group of people, full of imagination, ideas, and energy. We couldn't do any better. Thank you all, city council members, for making such great appointments. First, we have Joyce Virtue. Joyce? Give you a little bit of Joyce's background, which really should be a major motion picture. Oh, much better, thank you. Joyce served on the General Plan Advisory Commission, then served two terms on the Historic Preservation Commission. Joyce was also appointed to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, showing the broad interests that she has. She has a background in clinical nutrition and had many patients in the movie business. Joyce became a real estate broker in the 1990s. She was elected president of the Desert Chapter of Child Help USA, a national charity that provides assistance to abused children. Joyce traveled with Mary Tyler Moore, doing her makeup for print and media and TV. Mary was able to assist Joyce in joining the Makeup Artists Union, unusual for a woman. She also worked with Mario Caselli, photographing models for Playboy. That's a special chapter in Joyce's biography. Joyce co-authored the Sally Struthers Natural Beauty Book. Joyce is full of energy and joy, therefore each Cultural Commission event must possess energy and be joyous for our city. Thank you, Joyce. Suzanne Matthews is our vice chair, 2014-15. Suzanne Matthews is a 33-year veteran of the Central Intelligence Agency. She really keeps an eye on what we're doing. When not living abroad, she and her author-husband Jason raised their two daughters in Bethesda, Maryland. During her career, she and her family lived in 10 different countries, primarily in Asia and Europe. She has been a resident of Rancho Mirage for nearly three years and is active in the Ophelia Project, a mentoring program for high school girls. Suzanne brings a very sophisticated global viewpoint to the Cultural Commission. Julie Childers. Julie had a long and successful career as a paralegal with a San Diego law firm, followed by a wonderful experience working as a paralegal for a Denver, Colorado, workers' compensation attorney. Upon arriving to live full-time in Rancho Mirage, she was recruited by her HOA at Country Club Estates to help with parties and celebrations. She loves tennis, visiting museums, and in 2015, Julie will serve as an ambassador for the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival, to help create a memorable experience for authors and attendees. Julie will be our ambassador of fun. Julie brings a very practical, audience-centered viewpoint to the Cultural Commission. Frank Farino. Frank had a 10-year career with ABC News and Sports in New York and Los Angeles. He then segued into the music business for a nine-year stint with Dick Clark Productions, writing and producing syndicated music shows. Later, Frank transitioned to writing and producing primetime television, working on shows like Dynasty, Dallas, Falcon Crest, General Hospital, and others, before semi-retiring to the desert to run his own marketing agency for the last eight years. And I might add that last night at the library, we had Marilyn Madness and me, written by our playwright Frank Farino, and a full house, and everybody loved it, Frank. Thank you. Frank has taught creative writing at UCLA and is a member of the Screen Actors Guild, the Directors Guild, and the Writers Guild, and generously brings his writing, his imagination, and programming ideas to the Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission. Sally Trademan. Sally grew up in Ohio, and we don't hold that against you at all. And then really had a glimmer of brilliance and came to our beautiful desert. Sally had a satisfying career as an art teacher in several schools. She married her college sweetheart, and his career took their family all over the United States. They bought their Rancho Mirage home in 2001 because it is their favorite place. Sally reads voraciously, travels often, and loves to spoil her grandchildren. Sally insists on creating something every day, including paintings, greeting cards, or crafts. She brings great energy and an artist's touch to the work of the Cultural Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our Cultural Commission for 2014-15. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you all so much. You've done amazing work in such a short time, and we're looking forward to all of your presentations. It's going to be a fun year.
I just have one thing to say.
Come forward.
One thing to say, and we thank David for making this process for us very easy. Without David and Susan Cook, our job would be very difficult, but this makes it fun and very easy. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you. I would say. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Okay, we now have another presentation by councilmember Richard Kite.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really my pleasure today to introduce the new chair of the board of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, Kate Spates. Kate has brought a new kind of excitement to our organization. She graduated from College of the Desert in 1997, and just last week was honored by receiving the Outstanding Alumni Award. With a new executive director, Betsy Adamson, and a new chairman, the museum has begun a new direction. To tell you more about this new vision, here is our chairwoman of the Board of Directors of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, Kate Spates. Kate, it's good to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us to speak, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. I've served on this board for three years, and it's been a wonderful experience. I really enjoyed it. I want to bring up Betsy, our executive director, and Kyle Pong. She is our new education director, and also our fellow board member and treasurer, Brian Holcomb. We're going to be a gang up here. Betsy's been with us for almost two years and has over 18 years' experience in the hands-on learning field. In Minnesota, she worked at Minnesota Children's Museum, and that museum had a focus in science and art. At Exploratorium in San Francisco, it was a science center for all ages focusing on science, art, and perception. At Explora in Albuquerque, it was science and children's center combined. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's in education, so we're in really good hands with her. Kyle has recently returned to the desert after working at the Terry Lee Wells Children's Science Center and Museum in Reno, Nevada, and she was a high school science educator for four years and has been in the informal education field for another four years. So, now we'll start our presentation, I guess? Yeah, okay. So this is a beautiful shot of our museum, if anyone hasn't been there. Our mission. The Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert is a valuable community resource for children and families to experience the joy of learning about themselves and the world around them. The museum inspires personal growth by engaging curiosity and creativity through hands-on explorations of exhibits and programs. We've recently redone, kind of updated, our logo, and you'll see there's actually quite a few iterations of it, so each slide will show a different iteration of it, and we'll use them for different marketing purposes, whether it's science, or art, or fun things. So, and also this new ribbon, kind of, that mimics our mountains of the desert, so just some elements for you to notice. Our values are learning, family, and community. We value being a place that nurtures thoughtful, hands-on learning in a creative and engaging environment that celebrates learning as an innately joyful activity. We value being a place where multi-generational family members can grow their relationships through comfortably exploring, sharing, and learning together. And we value being a community resource and a welcoming place where people of all ages and backgrounds can come together to share experiences while learning about themselves and our world. So we've been very busy this summer. We, I'm the new board chairperson, and we have new partners, new strategies. Our organization is in great shape, and we're moving forward. We, there's been a really positive response to our new gift shop location. So, what we did, we were closed for almost four weeks in September, which is typical. We typically close for three weeks, and we added an extra week because we did a lot. The store moved into the lobby, and that served two purposes. Our store was in a separate area and kind of didn't really get a lot of foot traffic, and also, a lot of times, a volunteer would be sitting there by themselves. And so we really wanted to have this hands-on learning lab, and so that was sponsored by the Anderson Children's Foundation. And so, I'll show you a slide on that as well. But bringing the store items into the lobby actually changed the whole feel when you walk in, and I'll show you pictures, but there was a really positive response to that. So we opened back up on September 27th to our Free Family Day, which was sponsored by the city of Rancho Mirage, and we were so excited that 2,300 people came through those doors that day, and our store actually did really well. We had over $1,000 in sales, so we were happy about that. We also started new family memberships, and they've been very popular. This October, there were about 60% more new members than the previous year. So, thank you. Change is in the air, and thanks to the city of Rancho Mirage, we've been able to really put forward these change of physical changes, visitor changes, and program and exhibit changes, which we'll discuss. See the new, this logo is kind of a fun pinwheel. Physical changes. There's new merchandise in new places. So that's a picture of the store inside the lobby, and we actually changed the direction so when you come in, and you're either a member check-in, or you're paying the day rate, and now we send them out through the double glass doors, which opens up their exploration to either go into the new building, go down to the camp, play in the big open area, or the garden, or go into the main exhibit building. And then they exit through the store, kind of like Disneyland. That was our thought. More physical changes. This is the new hands-on learning lab in the old gift store location, and we actually, back here, we have some new cabinetry and that houses all of our microscopes and really exciting exploratory equipment. There's visitor changes. There's new faces, new ages, and new memberships. Because our STEM program and our focus going forward in that STEM world, which is really an important part of building our future and our children, we're attracting older and older demographic, because, I mean, my kids, I have twins that are in sixth grade, and they're just now learning about science. And so typically, they would be a little bit on the old side to go back to the Children's Discovery Museum, but because they're so fired up about science, and there's a place where they can explore and go with the microscopes and try all these fun experiments, there's a whole new reason for going there. It's not just going through the grocery store and playing in the dress-up and painting the bug anymore for my girls. So as children get older, we see that, and we're trying to keep them and hold them as members and using the museum as a resource for them and their education. Program changes. We have free family events. These Free Family Science Nights have been wildly successful, but almost 3,000 people enjoyed the museum on that first Free Family Day that was sponsored by you, the city of Rancho Mirage. The place was just packed. It was really exciting to see that, and just families and people who had never been to the museum, exploring it, and getting kind of fired up about it. Nurturing programs, or program changes with nurturing tomorrow's creative thinkers and leaders. These STEM programs, which is science, technology, and engineering, and math. This is our new supply cabinet. We're really helping children embrace problem-solving and learning and exploring and trying things, and hypothesizing, and seeing what happens when you do this, and just trying it rather than being afraid of it. So they're enjoying those new programs. New exhibit changes. We've got some new puzzles in the new DynaShore building, and they are really hands-on, they're actually quite challenging for adults, too, if you ever sit down, but we, they're just a quick puzzle, and there's several ways to go through them, so kids and adults are also really enjoying that. We couldn't have done it without the city of Rancho Mirage's support, so we want to thank you. And I know Betsy has some things that she wanted to talk about, so I'll give the floor to Betsy.
Thank you all for welcoming us here today. I've been here for nearly two years, as Kate mentioned, and we've really geared up for these older children, which is making a world of difference to us and, we hope, to the community. We want to share the joy of learning to as many people as possible, and we don't want them to quit experiencing hands-on learning when they hit age six or seven. One of the reasons we're focusing on STEM education, as Kate mentioned, is because it is a national priority, but there are other reasons, too. One, it lends itself to being hands-on, which is what we're all about, and that makes learning very fun. Another is, it opens up new revenue streams for us. There's a good deal of funding for science, technology, engineering, and math now, and also, once we can help older kids, we open that revenue stream, too. And we're able to help teachers with our STEM learning, and this is a big new initiative that Kyle's going to be a terrific help with. Starting in January, we're going to have classroom field trip programs, and thank you for all of the new equipment that you helped us purchase last year. Between the city of Rancho Mirage last year and the Anderson Children's Foundation, we purchased over $35,000 worth of new science equipment and furnishings, and that cabinet was just one of four that we have now, filled with equipment. The council also helped kick off our Free Family Science Nights, which have been a huge success, and those are in addition to our Free Family Nights, which you're funding this year. Last year was the Free Family, or the Family Science Nights. That's picked up new funding. Thanks to the council, we were able to leverage the good work we did last year and your funding into new programs and revenue this year. And I know we're running out of time, so I'll wrap it up. One of the things we're doing, though, beyond STEM learning, is we're maintaining our current toddler and early childhood programming, our art programming. We have an after-school art club. We have five toddler programs that we're continuing to improve on. And we're not done. I guess that's what I should end with. We're not done. We're working with teachers. We're working very hard with teachers to help them with the next-generation science standards, and I will leave it at that. We're not done, and we thank you. You've been with the museum from the beginning, and your support has made a world of difference to this valley. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Betsy, and Kate, and your whole team is doing remarkable work, and it's so nice to see how things are now being addressed to the older children so they can stay there and be occupied and be enlightened, and it's a pleasure to see. Thank you. Yes, Richard?
Just like to invite all of the council to come over to the Children's Discovery Museum when you get time, because there have been a lot of changes in the last year or two, not just in the personnel and the directors, but in the programings that are offered. So, it's really a valuable resource of the city of Rancho Mirage, and I think it's, would be worthwhile to go over and take a look, see the programs, meet some of the volunteers there. It's really inspiring to see the work that they're doing with the kids. So, thanks to them for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker, so if you have anything you'd like to say, please feel free to come down and join us. I have a couple of yellow cards that have been filled out, but if you didn't have a chance to fill one out, you're certainly welcome to come down and join us anyway. The first speaker will be Mary Lou Suter. Welcome, Mary Lou, and Mary Lou lives in Rancho Mirage, I know.
Thank you, Mayor Smutrich. A good afternoon to you and to the whole council. I'm a resident of the colony in Rancho Mirage, and if you will recall, several months ago, the council was so kind as to clarify for us. One of the issues at the colony was to ensure that we had both an exit gate at the front and at the rear of the colony. So you were very helpful in that, and we're grateful for that. So I wanted to update you that currently, construction is underway immediately south of the colony at Verlaine Estates, and the earth movers are out there scraping away at the dirt and big machinery, and I'm sorry, I don't have my little son anymore, he's a grown man, but should he have been here at that time? He'd be fascinated, sitting out there all day, watching this machinery. And the point I'm bringing to you today is that, as I stand there at the gate, at the rear gate, looking out, I'm keenly aware that I have the combination to that gate, as do all the members of our Emergency Preparedness Commission. Should we have an emergency in the colony, we can open that gate and go out, and they will be constructing a pathway for us, and we're grateful for that. And I guess my question to you at this point is that, how will the pathway be maintained? That I'm unaware of how that will happen. People have asked me, so I thought, well, since Verlaine Estates is on the agenda today, I would bring the question to you and see if you have a response, or if it's something I could find out somewhere else from City Hall. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Bruce, would you like to address that?
Sure, I'll try to address that. As part of the project plans, the contractor, the developer, is required to build this pathway. It'll be a combination of hardscape and some landscaping, and they are conditioned as part of their CCNRs, and they also have a homeowners association to maintain that pathway. That pathway will also be inspected on a regular basis by our fire marshal to make sure that that access is always maintained and not obstructed. So it will be on a list of numerous areas that we monitor on a yearly basis to make sure that it's maintained. So, but we have our code enforcement people. If there's any issues where it's not being maintained, we will be able to deal with the HOA and make sure that it is maintained, so. So we are well aware of it, and we'll make sure that it's always maintained.
Heretofore, I've told the people who asked the question that I know the city will handle it, and I'm sure it's being taken care of, but now I have more specific information, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Lou. It's always good to have these questions brought to our attention, and we can answer them and set everyone's mind at ease. Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Thornton. I believe that's how you pronounce it. Welcome to our podium, and please state the city in which you live.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dave Thornton, and I live in the city of La Quinta. I'm the executive director of Angel View, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my board and the clients that we serve to say thank you for your support of our recent grant request. You know, serving the disabled is an ongoing task, and we love what we do, and we're celebrating our 60th year in the valley, so we've been here since 1954, but we could not do what we do without your support. And we were tenacious about fundraising, and you see our thrift stores and our resale stores throughout the valley, but all that money goes into the hands and mouths and the needs of the clients that we serve, but we could not do it without our partner cities. For many years, we were just group homes in the valley, but in our group homes, we provide 24-hour care and supervision for children, young adults, and adults with severe disabilities. And when the Children's Discovery Museum was thanking you for the great work that they do with able-bodied children and some disabled. On the other end of the spectrum, you are supporting children who can't grasp, who can't walk and talk, so few of our residents can speak because of the severe disabilities. And we used to discharge people when they would reach a certain age, but we decided, wait a minute, they need continual life care all throughout the spectrum of life. We don't warehouse children or adults. We get them out in the community. Sometimes you will see them out at Pegasus Riding, or at the mall, or at a parade in the valley here. So you supported our food program, and food, they need many nutritional supports. Many of them are fed through G-tubes through the tummy, or J-tubes through their intestines. We have people with, that are not only nonverbal, like I said, but within the autism spectrum, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, and autism. And they're people who've grown up in the valley here, and we've been their parents for many, many years. So I would like to thank you for the support of our group homes, our food nutrition program, and most recently, over the past six, seven years, we started a day program. We now have 75 adults who've graduated the special ed programs in our schools and are needing the daytime stimulation, but we also have a program that we've run for two years now, which we go into the homes of more than 600 families throughout the desert, all the way from east to west end, and we help children who have tremendous needs. And the makeup of many of the homes of the parents who keep their children home are oftentimes single parents, cash-strapped, multiple siblings, and in dire need of resources. A woman that I met the other day who has a child that's now 31-years-old, I said, "You could write a book about all the ins and could write a book about all the ins and outs of serving your child." And she said, "Dave, I can't." I said, "Resources were very limited while raising my child, and now that my child's an adult, a lot of the services have gone away." So Angel View looks for resources to serve the needs of the disabled, children below 18 and below. Real quick here, many children that we serve have cancer, and so they need to go back and forth to Loma Linda for chemotherapy. Angel View provides the gasoline assistance to get them back and forth, because it's very expensive going back and forth, an hour and a half round trip. We... A child with cranial malformation needed a special helmet to reshape the skull. We found a $2,000 helmet. We paid for it to reshape the skull so that the child would have less disabilities as they grew. So grant programs, gasoline assistance, information and referral services. You help us support those families, and God bless you for that. So thank you for your past and continued support. Bless you. And I would always... Our homes are magical. We have 19 homes in the valley. If you'd ever like a tour, we'd like to show you and brag about you for the services you provide. So bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dave. If you could just stay up there for just a second. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding any of this?
You know, David, I don't think people really realize the extent of what you guys do. And I appreciate you sharing that. I mean that, really.
Thank you. I always say, one of the best things about Angel View is that you don't know we're in the community. You could be driving by our homes or different service centers and the families we've helped. So that's a good thing, you don't know we're there. The bad thing is, you don't know we're there. You think we're... What thrift store do you work at? But by you sharing your donations from your garage, it goes to our shelves and it goes out. And we raise a lot of money to help a lot of people to then do it again the next year. So thank you for your comments, and we want to continue to be your partner, so.
Thank you for coming here. But also, as Charlie said, thank you so much for coming and making us aware and making the public aware of the work you are doing. I don't think most people even think about where all the funding goes and how much funding is really needed for your programming. Is there a number where people can call if they want to make contributions or they want to get involved?
Absolutely. Bless your heart for asking that. It's our number we've had for years, 760-329-6471.
Say it again?
And medical care is just so expensive these days, but we take care of children and adults with entachectomies and ventilators. But they don't just sit around at a home all day. They go out into the community. They'll go up to the tram, or we'll get them to a ballgame, opera at the river, you know, just as we get them out. So again, gasoline, staff, vehicles cost a lot of money. And so it goes in our door and then to our residents and the families throughout our valley. So thanks again for your great questions and comments.
Yes, you are doing incredible work. And I know we've been to the mall a couple times and seen groups of children there, interacting, having lunch. And it's such a pleasure to see them out and about and learning how to take care of themselves and to interact with the public. Ted, did you want to make comment? Okay. Thank you again, and thank you for coming and thanking us.
Oh, thank you. I want to know and to share with you the great support you provide to us and the great work that's being done. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that's the end of our public comments. So the public comments are now closed. Moving on to city council comments. Is there anyone that wanted to speak on an item?
I'd be glad to. As most everyone knows, the City of Rancho Mirage has a vacation rental ordinance that was passed some months ago. And after it was passed, a challenge to a provision of it was made in court. The provision is that which requires that whoever rents a home, there be at least one person who's aged 30 or older who is designated as the responsible party. A challenge to that was made in Superior Court here in Riverside County. And it was defended, our side was defended, by Steve Quintanilla and his law firm. And we are pleased to report that the case has now finally been dismissed, and we have prevailed on all points. So that our ordinance, which does require that there be somebody at least age 30 in the group to whom the owner is renting, that survives and will continue to survive. And we hope that that will help provide at least comfort to those residents who are nearby to vacation rentals. And we remind them that if they'd like to have telephone numbers to raise complaints or issues, simply call Robert Barrett or Mike Shalangi at City Hall, 760-324-4511, and they will give you all the information you need. But we prevailed, and congratulations, Steve, to you and your law firm.
Yes, I do. I believe we are having a rebirth of the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at our new Ritz-Carlton. And I have read where it'll be, I think, on November 30 at 6 o'clock, if that's correct. And everybody's welcome. And we are long looking forward to that. So I will be there, and I hope everybody else will, too. Thank you.
And thank you for commenting about it. And we look forward to a wonderful holiday season in our entire total valley. Ted, did you have a comment?
Yes. I didn't anticipate that Bruce was going to be sitting next to me, because I wanted to compliment our Public Works Department. At the last city council meeting, we had a number of people here that had talked about the street light at Los Alamos and Gerald Ford. It also impacted the exit on Inverness coming out of Mission Hills. There had been three or four or five accidents as a result, and there was concern about the line of sight making a left turn. We, as a council, listened. Bruce Harry, who was Director of Public Works, paid attention. The meeting lasted about four hours, the council meeting. And by the time that council meeting was concluded, that light had been changed and the problem corrected. And my hat's off to the Public Works Department as a whole. Kudos to you. But it also shows, I believe, the sensitivity of not only the city council, but how we view the safety and well-being of our residents. So hats off to you, Bruce, and thank you for being so responsive.
Thank you, Ted.
Brief comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good news for the City of Rancho Mirage. This last Tuesday, it was announced at an LPGA press conference that the new title sponsorship for the former Craft Nabisco DynaShore Golf Tournament had been secured. Al Nippon Airlines, the ninth-largest airline in the world by revenues and the largest in Japan by passenger numbers and revenues, had agreed to a five-year commitment to the title sponsorship for the city's signature event. The tournament will be rebranded the ANA Inspiration and will be held at Mission Hills Country Club, March 30 through April 5. It was also announced that the 2015 purse size will be increased from $2 million to $2.5 million. Traditions such as the leap into Poppy's Pond, the presentation of the champion's robe, and the name of the DynaShore Trophy will remain unchanged. Gabe Cottin, the tournament director for this tournament, will be attending our next city council meeting on December 4 to share with us the details of this agreement and the improvements that we can expect to experience at the 2015 tournament. Remember that date again, March 30 to April 5. It'll be a great tournament, and we invite all of the residents in the valley to come out and see the changes and see great golf. So we'll be seeing Gabe Cottin again at the next meeting. Look forward to that, and we'll find out more about the new tournament. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, we will now close council comments and move on to the minutes. And I am told that we think that our system is behaving better now, so we're going to try to do our voting by pushing our little buttons.
Move approval of the minutes.
We'll see.
Okay, well, okay. So if there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, I believe Dana has made a motion to approve the minutes. And now we have a second, so please cast your vote. Okay, well, how about if we just do it?
It's perfect so far.
It's perfect. Okay. So we're going to take a voice vote, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, and the minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. And this is going to be presented by Bruce Harry from our Public Works Department. But if there are any items on our consent calendar that someone on council or from the public wished to have pulled, now would be a good time to mention it. Otherwise, we will move on to our council comments. Go ahead. We're all set.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first item is the way full readings of ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two on your consent calendar is the second reading of ordinance number 1087. This is repealing the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Section 3.34.100, prevailing wages, exempting the city's public works projects from prevailing wage law requirements, and adopting Section 3.34.105, imposing prevailing wage law requirements upon certain locally-funded public works projects. Item 2A was added by supplemental agenda on Monday, November 7. Item number 2A is the second reading, amending Section 17.28.100, the sign program of Title 17 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, to create sign program exceptions for planned commercial projects greater than 15 acres in size per the Zone Text Amendment, case number ZTA 14001. Item number three on the consent agenda is a request for the city council to reconsider four prior SAF awards and consider two new funding requests from nonprofits. And the staff report on page 3-1 are the four listed nonprofits that the city council requested be relooked at at their last meeting on October 16. And also, the two new requests from Cathedral Center and Christopher's Clubhouse. Item number four is the appointment to the Jocelyn Senior Board, Center Board, to appoint Barry Lynn Freebie as the city's representative to the Jocelyn Center Board. Barry Lynn Freebie has applied to fill the vacancy, and her application is attached to the staff report. Item number six... I'm sorry, item number five are approval of contracts. And item number six are your demands, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from staff? I mean, from council to staff? Okay, seeing none. We're going to try again with our system. Cindy seems to think it might work now.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please vote. Hooray. Motion carries, 5-0.
Technology survives.
Yes, it's great when it works.
Way to go, Cindy.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, IT.
Okay. All right, moving on to the public hearings. And number seven on our agenda is Community Facilities District Number One, annexation for Verlaine Ventures. And this is going to be taken care of by Bruce Harry again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item, this public hearing today was set on October 16 by the city council. This public hearing is to conduct an election regarding the creation of a CFD for police and fire services for annexation area number 163. The attached resolution would accomplish this. The proposed annexation to the CFD is located on Verlaine Drive between Sunny Lane to the south and Palm View Drive to the east. The annexation area is approximately 6.96 acres in size. It includes 17 single-family residential lots. And the annual CFD revenue anticipated for fiscal year 1415 is $6,687.80. It's now that it would be appropriate to open up the public hearing, take public testimony after the public hearing is over. If there is no protest, the council can go ahead and adopt the resolution as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any questions from council? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing if there are any questions or comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments, and we shall vote on this.
Bruce, I have a question. Does the area which has the homes already built, are they included in the CFD?
No, they were included in the prior track that was approved. It was a phased map. They were included in the prior track that was done by Rick Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So do we have a motion and a second? Can we do this? I see there's an A, B, and C, so we can do it with one motion? Okay, so then I will make the motion that the city council adopt the resolutions listed below. A, Resolution Number 2014, next in order, declaring the annexation of territory to an existing CFD and authorizing submittal of levy of special taxes to the qualified electors. B, Resolution Number 2014, next in order, submits a proposition to levy a tax to voters and sets forth certain procedural requirements relating to the required election. And C, Resolution Number 2014, next in order, declares the results of the election. So...
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes, 5-0.
I have a comment.
Okay, Steve would like to comment.
The next time you see something like this come forward with respect to annexation to a community facilities district, you're going to see it one time, because we're going to start using the expedited process. So instead of doing it, taking two steps to do it, you'll be able to do it just one step.
Okay. Sounds like good news. Thank you. All right, the motion passed, so we're moving on to item number eight. And this is... These are action items. So this will be an item reported on by Sean Smith, our Economic Development and Housing Manager. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. So since receiving project approval on November 6, Paragon Commercial Group has been working quickly to begin the process of redeveloping the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center. The initial step in what will be a fairly long process to completion is the demolition of the city-owned Annex Building at the corner of Highway 111 and Bob Hope. The city in Paragon entered into a purchase and sale agreement in November of last year in order to facilitate the relocation of the CVS to a new building in this location. In preparation for the close of escrow and subsequent demolition, staff is working to vacate the building by the beginning of December. The Sheriff's Department currently occupies a portion of the building for use as a substation. Paragon is offering a triple-net, rent-free, two-year lease on an in-lined space near the Magnesia Falls entrance. The only fee charged by the property owner would be the triple net cost at approximately $440 a month, or $5,280 a year. The city would retain the right to terminate the lease with 30 days' notice. Staff has visited the site with Lieutenant Shields of the Sheriff's Department to determine its suitability for use as a substation. With some tenant improvements, Lieutenant Shields believes it would be adequate. Staff is requesting that the city council approve the business points as discussed and presented in the staff report and authorize the city manager to execute the lease once finalized by the city attorney's office. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions from council?
Just one question. At the end of the two-year term, does the city have any option to continue to stay there?
At that point, it's proposed to be a month-to-month lease. Ideally, we'd like to find the Sheriff's Department a permanent substation during that two-year period and move them out prior to the expiration of this lease.
Thank you. Sean, who will be responsible for doing the improvements?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what the level of cost on the improvements would be. So far, the city, I think, has been willing to step in and work on that. IT is working on getting the communications up, and there isn't much other than that that needs to be done. that needs to be done, just the minor improvements on the interior. So there really isn't much of a cost.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment that this is another example of Paragon being cooperative with us. They have provided a empty store that will take several years to lease based upon the construction schedule and have provided this space for the sheriffs to move into gratis. And so it's most hospitable of them. I think that the sheriff's department is pleased. And it's, again, another example of them cooperating to the nth degree.
Thank you, Ted. Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay. Any public comments? Seeing none, public comments are closed. Someone like to make a motion?
I will. I move that the city council approve the business terms contained in the lease agreement, lease with CCF, PCG, Las Palmas, LLC, Paragon, for city's lease of property at 42448 Bob Hope Drive for use as a sheriff's substation. And B, authorize the city manager to execute the lease once familiarized by the city attorney in substantial compliance with the approved business terms.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you so much. Okay, I think we have come to the end of our regular council meeting and now we will move on to Steve Quintanilla, our city attorney's comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council will now recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, to prefer legal counsel regarding the case of Veronica Juarez et al. versus city of Rancho Mirage. Council will also discuss with its real property negotiator, property located, identified as APN number 68424001 pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8. That's it.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for coming today. It's always a pleasure seeing some nice faces out in our audience and we'll see you next time. Meeting adjourned.